Okay, we're starting at 6:33. Welcome, everybody, to the September 14th Borough Council Meeting. If we have Doreen on the line, Doreen, could you do the roll call, please?
Shirley. Suzanne on touch?
Here.
Pete Merkel?
Here.
Emil?
Here.
Mark Watkins?
Here, here.
Ralph Touch?
Here.
Colin Boyer? John Rothenberger?
Present.
And Chief Stinski?
Here.
Tammy Gore?
Present.
Andy George?
Here.
Chris Young?
Here.
Craig Conrad?
Here.
I believe that covers everybody.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Since the chief is on deck, Chief, did we want to do your report first?
Suzanne, can we just remind everybody it's being recorded for borough purposes only?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please be aware that the borough meeting is being recorded for borough purposes. If you have any questions or concerns, that was voted on previously. So we'll just move along from there.
And everybody can see the borough agenda on their screen currently?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, then, if we can, then let's start with Chief Stinski, so that he can get his report taken care of.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good to be with you again tonight. You got, the council should have gotten a report emailed out late last night. A couple of things of note, we did have, across our jurisdiction, we had a pretty significant response to mental health-related issues, pretty, spread out pretty equally above everywhere. We had no major problems. We got everybody the help they needed without incidents. That was a good thing. Here in town, we had a couple of people who reported as disorderly in committing retail theft at the Turkey Hill. Officer got there very shortly after being called, and upon trying to back, pin the people in, they actually pulled out around the car and took off out of the in driveway entrance for Turkey Hill. They were stopped on South Franklin over by the railroad tracks and taken into custody without incident. The one woman who was driving was charged with DUI and felony fleeing and eluding because it was a DUI-related charge, and the other woman was charged with retail theft and public drunkenness. We also, in town here, we had a couple of vandalism calls. People are, you know, people are out every now and again stealing somebody's, stealing somebody's political sign. That's sort of been scattered about. We did have one incident, though, where actually a resident had three retirees punctured in their sign. They tried to burn the sign that was up in their yard. So we're looking, trying to follow up and see if we could find something to go on with that. There's also, we're actively also investigating a rather significant vandalism case at the park. We've gotten some of the video from the cameras that are installed there, and we're working, we've identified one of the individuals, and follow-up is underway. So hopefully, we'll get those guys corralled here in the near future. We had, we did have, talking about, kind of interesting, you may have seen the paper. I didn't call them. A friend of mine actually leaked the story, but as you know, we have a public-facing Facebook page, and oftentimes, we get messages from the public through our Facebook page. And it isn't, it's not, it's fairly common for us to actually get a request for some kind of assistance from a town called Fleetwood in Lancashire over in the UK. Usually, people are talking about dogs or some hoodlums at the end of the street, and I politely point them to the right, the appropriate place to call. And sometimes, a little embarrassed about reaching out across the ocean for help. We had turned out, what turned out to be a 16-year-old man who was talking about killing himself, and we were able to actually talk him into police custody. He was reported as a missing person there, and we were able to get him hooked up and get him the help he needed. So that was a good thing for us. We handled multiple complaints.
Chief, do you mind if I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
You do mind?
You're the boss. No, no, I don't mind at all.
Okay. I just wanted to commend the chief on following up with this, and it was really nice to see that article on the front page, and we've seen so much negativity, and, you know, all we hear about is COVID, and there's been so much negativity about police departments across the country, and we're so fortunate that we have you and your team, and I just wanted to, it was just really refreshing to see such a really positive article. And I want you to know that I have reached out to the mayor and the officials in Fleetwood, Lancashire, in the UK, and I shared that story there and asked them to share it with their police department. So who knows where that might lead, but I have been in contact with the people over the pond. So they were pleased to get the letter and the article, and I'm waiting to hear how they want to proceed. So.
Oh, thank you. So, other than that, we did, during the storm, we did respond to help out with several water and house complaints, mostly coordinating with the fire department response, depending upon where they were. Personnel-wise, all of our, both our probationary officers are doing well, and I actually mailed out two background investigation packets for prospective part-time officers. One of them actually just sent me an email before the meeting, and hopefully, I'll be able to get together and do an interview with him here in the next couple of days. We had, last month, we had that minor crash with the Tahoe when Sergeant Al Schaefer was driving it, where someone struck him. That guy did actually pay for the repairs. Repairs were made. Nothing extra was going on there. Currently working on the budget proposals with the borough manager. And the, as far as the Fall Fest goes, we had the application for PennDOT, for the permit to close that block of Main Street, has been forwarded. It was kicked back. We had to do a, I just had to add a generic statement about following appropriate COVID-19 protocols that they require now in these times. Give it back to my in here backs. I expect everything as well. I did attend a meeting last week with the Fleetwood Fire Police, and they are on board to handle the detour and everything else that's going on. Also coordinated with West Reading Police Department, and they offered to lend us some of those heavy-duty plastic barricades that you could fill with water or sand. Given the times we lived in, I figured that was probably an appropriate way to go to make sure the people who are walking across the street and all are protected from cars that may either accidentally or on purpose try to impinge in that area. So there is actually a local supplier for those. It is kind of a short turnaround for us. I spoke with Chief Powell in West Reading, and he agreed to let us borrow about a dozen of the West Readings barriers, and I gave the contact information for their Public Works Department to Bobby the other day. So they'll be coordinating the delivery to come over here, and I spoke with John Mannmiller, and we have a plan in place to actually fill them up, have the fire company fill them up with water right before the event starts. So that seems to be tracking well, and we should be in good shape there. That's about, those are about the highlights I have, unless anybody has any other, any other specific questions. I did attend the Ruska Manor Township meeting last week. Everything is well with them. They're pleased with their service. I did reach out and trade text with Supervisor Warner from Richmond Township. They're still not opening their meetings to the public. If anything comes up in discussion, he'll reach out to me personally tonight.
Lincoln Motel?
I beg your pardon?
Where's the Lincoln Motel? You had a drug arrest at the Lincoln Motel?
Yeah, there was actually a complaint by one of their, that place has some truck drivers, some students, they have some very, like, touch-and-go people who are there for a day and then leave type of thing, and they also have two or three, actually, long-term tenants, I guess you would call them, who live there. And one of the long-term tenants was approached by somebody there who was in a transient status and about selling drugs, and they made a report to us. Officers responded and found that the person was actually wanted for failure to appear, for strangulation-related charges at the Skuggal County. So the person was taken into custody, and then there were, in fact, drugs found in the room. So pending lab results and stuff, charges for those additional drug charges will be filed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have anything else for the chief? Any of our guests on the line, or is the guest line open, Chris?
I'm going to, I can unmute them now.
Do any of our guests that, do any of our guests that have attended or attending tonight, do they have any questions for Chief Stinski?
You can unmute yourselves if you do, and I also, we need to identify a couple more that came in during the chief's report.
Okay, it looks like we don't have any other questions for the chief at this time. I want to thank you, chief, for your time, and I also, I also concur with what Tammy had said. Congratulations on dealing with that issue across the pond expertly done, and I'm sure that the family of that young man is very happy that you were available to pick up the phones. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if anything comes up during later in the meeting, just give me a call. I'll be leaving the office here in a few minutes to head down to Topten's meeting, but I'm available if you need something.
Perfect. Thank you, as always.
You're welcome.
Okay, Chris, do you want to find out the other folks in the line, or do you want to move on to BIA?
I think we should, we should identify. So we have somebody with the 944-8806. Can you let us know who you are? 944-8806, can you hear us? Okay, I'm going to move them to a waiting room. We have phone number 8475. Can you hear us? And phone number 944-1704. 8475, looks like you're on board.
I am 8475. How you doing?
Good, and who are we talking with?
Paul, last name Noll.
N-O-L-L?
Correct.
And your address?
325 West Arch Street.
Thank you very much. And we still have another number here, 1704.
Correct.
And who are we talking to?
Virgie Klopp.
I most likely do bad things on your spelling here, and what's your address?
337 West Arch.
And I believe that's everybody, Suzanne. Let's see if we can get 8806 yet. Oh, 944-8806, are you there? All right, last chance, 944-8806, are you there? Can you hear us? All right, Suzanne, should I put them in the waiting room?
I think so, yes. Can you, are you identified? Are you, how are you, would you know someone in the waiting room is trying to get through to you?
Well, it's not, it's just since they're unidentified, I can go back to them later and try to read them later.
Okay, well, we'll try to go there after each subject, at each subject, and see where we are. How's that?
You could send a, Chris, you could send a chat message to them too privately.
Yeah, I tried, and unfortunately, on the phone, you can't chat on a phone line.
Yeah, I think it's probably not a cell if it's a 944 number.
Right. Okay, so I think everybody's identified, Suzanne. You're.
No problem. We'll go back to Ryan Kern, please, from BIA for the engineering report.
Unfortunately, he can't make it tonight.
Okay, then we're going to move up, move over to the, open the phone lines for our guests, then. So I understand we have, I'm just going to go in the order that we took the names, and I apologize if that makes people out of order, but we'll get to everybody. Ms. Renninger, what can we, what can we do for you this evening? Ms. Renninger, are you there? Okay, maybe we'll circle back with Ms. Renninger, maybe she'll come back on. Mr. Worley? Chris, are they muted?
They are, and I'm requesting to unmute, but they're not responding.
Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't John Watkins and Mike Fitzgerald first?
Yes.
Well, why don't we take them?
I apologize, Pete, I didn't hear that they were here, so I apologize.
They may have come in before you signed on, Suzanne.
That's okay. So then why don't we go to Mr. Watkins and Mr. Fitzgerald, then? Gentlemen, are you available?
Good evening, am I unmuted?
Nope, you're good. Go ahead, John.
You're good.
I'm good. Okay, good evening, everybody. Appreciate you taking the time to look over this project with us. I'm working with Mike Fitzgerald to renovate the church on Locust Street, which was part of the fire that happened the other year, and it's been sitting vacant for a while. We're looking to try to find the best use for the building, which pretty much, by looking through the different options that we have, are limited because there's limited parking out at the building, and although it's an assembly space, any assembly groups that go in there would have a pretty good struggle trying to get, you know, an operation to work there. There's only, like, nine spaces in the back, and that's if they're stacked. So looking at it, we felt that apartments were probably the best use for the building, and we are presenting tonight a concept to show three apartments into the building. They're very generous apartments. They're not squeezed in. We're trying to make them high-end in the sense that they're not, you know, going to be for low income. They're going to be, you know, nice, some apartment, I don't know if you see renderings, but there's a rendering of the front apartment that has the cathedral ceiling in it, sort of to just give you a flavor of what we envisioned for the project. Is everyone able to see, Chris, the plans and the renderings, or?
So I emailed them to all the council. Right now, the picture is up on the shared screen, if everybody can see it, with the cathedral ceiling.
Well, it looks really nice, and I'm happy that the Fitzgeralds purchased that property and are looking to do so much with it, so.
Great.
And there's no issue, as long as there's three apartments with the nine spaces, because isn't it two apartments, two spaces per apartment?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't be an issue. Looks lovely.
Great, thank you. We recognize we have to do some processes with zoning, and we already have that initiated, so we're just really trying to get, you know, the borough, you know, everybody to understand what we're trying to do, and if there are any questions to ask now, that we can move ahead confidently that we have the support for the project.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Watkins or Mr. Fitzgerald?
It's Pete. I thought we had to make a decision, and forgive me, I can't remember the terminology, but if the project doesn't change the dimensions of the exterior of the building, then don't we have to absolve you of something?
So one of the things, I think, Pete, what you're talking about is the land development plan, and what we did with the Richmond Street Church is what Mike and John are looking to do here. Mark Cuck is the attorney who represented Mr. Pfister at the Richmond Street. We had a conference call on Thursday or Friday this past week outlining exactly what they would need to do, and the land development plan would be the first thing that council would need to agree to waive, like they did with Grand Central, like they did with the Richmond Street Church. And then the second thing that Andy likes is we most likely need a conditional hearing, I think it's called conditional hearing, in order to allow the apartment in that, in that zoning area, again, like we did with the Richmond Street Church.
Yeah, so I haven't even looked at this yet, and if it is the same as the prior church converted into apartments, it would be a use that's permitted by conditional use. If you remember, we had a hearing before council. Really, conditional use is kind of like a, same as a special exception. It's just heard by a different body. Conditional use requests are heard by the municipal body, council and supervisors, opposed to a zoning hearing. So if it is the same, then yeah, we'd have to go through that same process.
And that's, that's the concept at this point, Andy.
Okay, and, you know, as far as full disclosure, I have represented Mr. Fitzgerald in the past, so it's not to say that we, that our firm could not represent the borough, but I'd have to get paper signed that would waive any conflict. And I realize Mark Cuck is representing Mike in this matter.
I should know this stuff, but what triggers that land development plan? What, what? What, it seems recently we've been dealing with this.
It could be a new building, could be, you know, another structure, building expansion.
Yeah, but this is not, this is not a new building, and they're not expanding, so why do we have to deal with it?
It's a change of use.
It's right. It's a, it's a use that, I haven't looked at this, but if it's the same, it would be a use that's permitted under our zoning ordinance, but it's a use permitted by conditional use, which then requires a hearing before council. Land development is a different animal, and this development might not trigger, and probably doesn't, trigger land development, so council could see to waive the application of the land development ordinance. So then they wouldn't have to submit formal plans and go through that whole process.
So, Andy, what are the next steps at this point?
Well, if it does require a conditional use hearing, there would be an application that's filed by Mr. Fitzgerald. Same, same thing as Mark Cuck, land owner, on, so that, that would be filed, and then we'd set up a conditional use hearing within 60 days from whenever the application is filed.
Okay.
Andy, this is Ralph. Didn't we waive that last time for the church on Richmond?
We waived land development, if I remember correctly, but we did have a conditional use hearing.
Correct. Okay.
It was, I mean, if you remember, Mark Cuck was there, and we had the gentleman testify, and they presented some exhibits, and the hearing might have taken a half hour. It was scheduled, I think, right before a council meeting, maybe.
I was going to say, Andy, I think we did it right before a council meeting, because I recall them at the same time, which is, I think, why it all runs together.
Yeah, it was, it was pre-COVID, so that was like 100 years ago.
We were all in the room together. I remember that. Does anybody on council have any concerns about this use for this property?
No.
You want to run that? Let's just run down the list so we can hear from everybody. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, starting at the top, I can start with myself. I don't have any concerns about it. Moving on.
Pete Merkel?
No concerns.
Jim Meals?
No concerns.
Mark Watkins?
No concern.
Ralph Touch?
No concern.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
I have none.
And Tammy, how about you?
I think it's exciting. I love to see these properties being used in alternative ways, and so no concerns, quite the opposite.
Absolutely. Well, it sounds like, gentlemen, that you've got unanimous support, so we look forward to your next step.
Suzanne, could we make the motion to waive the other requirement now, the way we did for the other church?
The.
Is there any reason not to? Right, the first step was, Andy, do that one more time. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, is that, is that request being made tonight, I presume?
Well, yeah, we could, we would.
Yes, if I may, we might want to see the plan first before we waive the, waive the, the plant, the waive the land development. Because we really didn't see a plan yet. This is all very conceptual. I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I think to waive it without seeing a plan might cause an interesting.
Yeah, it might be a little premature, and I mean, if we hold off for a month, it's not going to pull these guys up, if they still have to go through the zoning process. It can happen at the same time.
May I say something? It's Mike Fitzgerald?
Sure.
I mean, would you be okay waiving the land development with the understanding that, you know, the changes are going to be on the inside, not on the outside? I mean, land development primarily is going to, is affecting the outside.
Exterior.
Right.
That's what I recall we did in the other case as well, because this doesn't touch the outside of the building.
Correct.
I think we, we waived land development on the, the old butcher shop project also, right off the bat.
Correct, yep.
Certainly. Someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. It's Pete.
Thank you, Pete. Do we have a second, please?
John will pick him.
John Rothenberger seconds it, please. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll.
Okay, Suzanne on touch?
Agreed.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer? John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, looks like we're a go, gentlemen. We've got a unanimous vote. Do we have any further discussion on this? Okay.
Good luck, Mike.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the help and the kind words.
No worries.
Thank you, Suzanne.
We would reach its potential. Can't wait to see what this new building looks like. I'm sure it's going to be spectacular.
I can't wait.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so Chris, just before I, I don't want to make another error, can I go back to the list, starting with Ms. Renninger, or were there other?
So we got Mr., or the phone number ending in 8806 has rejoined us. Can you identify yourself, please? 944-8806, are you there? And Mr. Worley, looks like you're having trouble unmuting. If I can suggest hanging up and calling back in, maybe that will help. So Mr. Worley at 3:30 West Arch, if you could disconnect and then recall in, we'll let you back in, and maybe that will solve your unmuting problem. But it looks like, Suzanne, everybody on here is all from Arch Street. Unfortunately, 8806 is still not responding.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to let them open for now. Hopefully, they will connect, but then we'll have to do something. So go ahead.
Chris?
So. Chris, this is Denton, and I, you skipped over me, but I have no issues. I'm just following along. There's a lot of activity going on with. I'm just following along, there's a lot of activity going on with water and sewer and I follow the council meetings to stay in touch with it, so.
Okay.
Sounds like this, this church would, would come into our new tap-in fee rates, so.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, that's all, I'm just here to listen and learn. I'll unmute myself.
Okay. Ms. Renninger, are you able to speak at this time?
Ms. Reddinger is here.
Hi there, this is Suzanne Touch. What can we do for you this evening, ma'am?
Uh, yes, I have a concern about West Arch Street as a whole. The road is in terrible shape and the drainage is even worse. I realized we had our six to seven inches in, in an hour and a half, but most of the homes on West Arch Street were completely flooded in the basement. And we spent tens of thousands of dollars to rectify this. And I was wondering what the borough and the water unit is going to do about putting grates into the road so that there's better drainage and what they're going to do about the creek. Most of us don't really care too much about the footbridge at this point, because if that is done first, that will probably wash out again. If the pipes and the grates aren't installed and the creek is not, doesn't have some kind of a boundary on either side. I know it's hard to get backhoes in there. But if they could just please put some kind of barrier up on the sides of the creek so that it could handle it. And if not, Rescanner Township is going to have to put in a dam or a reservoir, some way that the, the amount of water is not going to come down the mountain into the Little Willow Creek. That's my concern.
Okay. How about Mr. Worley, are you on the line? Are you, about the same thing?
Fortunately, he's still muted.
Okay. How about Mr. Knoll?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess I would dovetail off of Lori's comments and offer some sort of suggestions from what I've researched so far. But it sounds like you have to go through, like, in order to dredge the creek, is basically what we, what we witnessed on August 4th during that storm was a, when the 90-degree turn right of the creek, which is right at the turn at Maple in the Arch Street. There was like a 30-foot log that got jammed in that section there. And it's right as they finished the, the stoning of the creek, which was the project from, yes, pre-COVID year, whichever that is. So when it came down, it got jammed into that, into that 90-degree turn, resulting in a backing up of all the debris, which, when it finally let loose about an hour and a half later, approximately 1:30, it went right into that bridge and that's when it destroyed the bridge. So the immediate cause of that bridge being damaged was due to the choking point at the 90-degree turn right at Arch Street. What it ended up doing on this side of the creek is it actually forced the, you know, backed up all the water, forced it over the side into the, into the street and Arch Street and rushed down through and, and through some of our backyards. So it's concerning now, because now that the, now that the damage is done and everything's being fixed, I noticed that the creek bed itself is about approximately three foot higher in that 90-degree choke point than it was pre-storm. So what happened, what that means is another three-inch-an-hour storm could send a 100-year flood back over into the sewer system in Arch Street, which is, but backed it up in the first place. So I think something needs to be done there sooner than later. I know the EPA and the Pennsylvania version of it is going to be, they're not going to be too kind to it, but I think, you know, something needs to be, you know, needs to be researched to figure out how to get it done. Another thing that would be important is if you go downstream in the creek, it seems like every time you get about another five inches of creek bed or a five, like a five-inch flood on that creek, it seems to go in, into the grass at this point. And I know everyone's cleaning it up. But that bed down there has also filled up with debris over the last 40 years. As a child, I can remember there was an actual waterfall near the second pavilion. And now it's so choked up that you can only see the top edge of it. So it's time for something to be done with that. Another option, I would say, is if we could look into the EPA and some kind of grant for trying to do wetlands and try to reclaim some wetlands in some of those areas that are just being mowed and not being utilized in the park. Maybe they'll have some funds for that and then we can kind of like work on, you know, build up the sides of the creek and try to dig out a little bit to make more wetlands for bog turtles or whatever else they like. But that might be a start to like get in there and get some funding and see what we can do to get approval to work on that. Because if not, it might get worse. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
8806 is on the line.
You Miss Klopp?
Pardon?
Are you Mrs. Klopp, Virgie Klopp?
No.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm Mrs. Richard Jaeger, 8806.
Perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Jaeger, we were trying to get ahold of you.
Yes. I understand that Arch Street is supposed, is on the list to be resurfaced. Is that correct?
Did you say Arch Street, ma'am? I didn't, couldn't make out what you said.
Yes, Arch Street. From Arch to Chestnut. I mean, from Maple to Chestnut, but Arch Street.
This is Craig from Public Works. And yes, ma'am, that will eventually be resurfaced. There's going to be a new water main installed there prior to resurfacing.
Well, my question then is, can, can grates be put down where the church is at Arch and Chestnut Street? Can grates be put in there? Because we seem to be getting the water coming down from Washington Street and then it, it comes over by the church and comes down to Arch and flows into the middle. And then the creek water comes in and we're, the Reddingers live across the street from us. Matt lives and Paul live right next door. And the water comes right there in the middle. We have the water coming from Washington Street down Chestnut. Then it takes a left into Arch Street, Arch. And the water from the creek comes the other way and that's why we're getting all the water. My question is, before you do the street, can you put some, another grate there like you have up in Washington Street? Put a catch basin for water there? Would that be considered?
Craig, is there a way to talk to our engineers about this? Just to revisit the plans for the resurfacing to, to see if there's anything, any additional considerations that could be made?
Yeah, I apologize, my dogs are going crazy, someone must be walking by the house. But, um, yes, I have a meeting with engineers, actually, this week to look at some storms, storm sewer stuff. And that's one area we will take a look at. And as far as the Willow Creek restoration in the park, we have been working on a Willow Creek restoration plan for over a year now with some grant money that we had gotten from DEP. And we're working on a design and we're working on a design to take the stormwater from the pipes into a BMP, a best management practice in the area where the bridge washed out, that land that we own there, and run the drainage into there and from there into the stream. So we are actively working on a plan. And the next step would be to put that plan in action and look for funding to go forward with that.
Thank you, Craig. And we had another person on the line, Mrs. Klopp. Mrs. Klopp, do you have anything you want to tell us? Maybe, I'm not sure, maybe she's having difficulty.
She's connected, so I don't know.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe the other folks that were on the line have addressed those concerns that she has. So Craig, how about we do this, when, after, let's follow back around with this at our next meeting, after you've had an opportunity to speak with the engineers and see what they can tell us about any other options that might be available.
Sure, and hopefully Ryan will be at the next meeting as well.
Right.
It's Pete, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I mean, the flooding that just happened down on West Arch and the park is just absolutely unprecedented. Does anybody know, was it just the storm? Was that, was that severe? Or is there something going on upstream that we don't know about?
May I, this is 8806 again, may I respond to that?
Yes.
When we get heavy rains, our street does flood. This was not just an exception. It doesn't mean that our backyards and it didn't come into the basements, but our street does go curb to curb, sometimes over the pavement, the water, when we have heavy rains. All the time.
That's right, and the grates on the north or the south side, there are maybe two or three grates.
Well, they're only, they're only small pipes. They're, the one grate that is on our side, on the, the 316 side, that grate is only a grate that takes the water over to the other side and then goes down. It doesn't go down anywhere. It just crosses the street and goes over to the other one. So that water isn't doing anything. And that's the only other grate that's there. So, and we get, every time we have a heavy rain, and I mean a real heavy rain, we get it to the curb and over the pavement.
Over the curb, yep. And on 315 side, there's only one grate. So there's no way it can take care of it, we need more grates. And up at Chestnut and Arch.
Yeah, that's why I suggested, before they do the street at Chestnut Street, at that corner where it comes, the water comes down from Washington Street and makes a left and comes right into our street. And there's nothing there to take it away. And the grate that is at the alley, between the two houses, only goes across the street to the other grate.
Right.
Well, I think Craig's going to get the.
Something to look into, I think.
Craig will get the engineers to look into stormwater on West Arch, or stormwater system. But the aerial views of the water after this last storm, I mean, no stormwater system would have taken care of that, it was.
We understand that, that we understand. But I'm talking about all the other times, it, when it pours and rains, it doesn't take it away.
Okay, so just on a normal situation, it's.
We get it anyway, we have floods.
Yeah, yeah, so we should have our engineers, we should have our engineers look at that, Craig.
Yeah, we're meeting actually this week, so we can, we're planning on doing that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect, okay. I think that addresses the folks that were on the line. Was there anything else of concern or was it about the drainage issues on Arch?
That's all from us, 8806.
Okay, all right. All right, then I think we can move forward to the next added item, which is Andy, about the resolution for the public meeting.
So at the last meeting, this came out last couple of meetings, and we developed a draft resolution. We've been working on this for some time regarding policies about public meeting protocols. And we talked last meeting that the Sunshine Act allows municipalities to adopt and enforce reasonable rules for meetings. Some questions arose at the last meeting about whether those restrictions that we had in here were reasonable. We tabled it, we did some research into it and we found nothing to indicate that the restrictions in the resolution. So basically, it's, if a speaker is commenting in a disruptive manner or if a speaker is interrupting others, causing issues, then the policy would be violated and the president of council, just reading from the resolution, could request that the person leave the meeting. So, or another option would be to call for a recess of the meeting or adjourning the meeting to another time and place based on the conduct of the individual. Then there's also some language in here about recording of meetings and it says that, you know, there's rules related to where the recording takes place from the, from the public area, if there's a member of the public recording a meeting. Or if it's an elected official or a staff member recording the meeting, then in both of those instances, there's a requirement that the person announce their intent to record the meeting prior to recording it. So it's really just to avoid any disruption of the meeting and allows for a meeting to occur without any interruptions. So I didn't know if Colin had any comments on this or if anybody else had comments.
I'll open it up to the floor. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Andy?
I have a question, Andy. I looked at the, at the proposed resolution. You just mentioned something about options for violations of the rules. Says one option is to have that person who's disrupting the meeting removed or to adjourn the meeting. Is that specifically identified in the, in the rules? In the resolution, I'm sorry.
Is that identified in the resolution?
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's on page three. This is the one I'm looking at, it's on page three in subsection, well, section three, letter E, and then it's toward the end of that long section. It's titled "Manner of Public Comment." And then the last two paragraphs deal with what we were talking about. So it says, "In the event that a speaker violates this policy or conducts comment in a manner that fails to conform with the policy, basically being disruptive, the president may request that individual leave the meeting. And if the individual does not voluntarily leave when requested to do so, the president can ask for the assistance of law enforcement officers." The next section says that the president may call for a recess or adjournment of the meeting to another time or place if the lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting.
Thank you. So I think my final question is, if somebody is recording the meeting, but not recording the meeting from the identified location in the room. identified location in the room, would you consider that a disruption of the meeting if it's not in somebody's face, et cetera? I don't know exactly how to word it, but would you consider that violation of those rules, a disruption of the meeting? That would invoke that clause?
No, because it the the whole this whole, not the whole resolution, but just part of the resolution is really just to promote orderly meeting. So if somebody's recording the meeting from, I don't know, from the area where the water is, for example, then now, I mean, if it's not disrupting the meeting, then who cares? So this is really designed to just stop any disruptive conduct and then give counsel the ability to to deal with it if it does become disruptive.
Thank you.
So there's really, there's no guidance. There's there's no guidance we found like with case law or ethical opinions and things like that. And the Sunshine Act is pretty broad on on what it says. I mean, it just says that it gives the municipality the authority to adopt and enforce reasonable rules for use of recording devices and just adopt rules and regulations for the conduct of meeting. So again, it's very broad and we're we're not doing anything out of the ordinary. This is pretty vanilla and accepted in other municipalities. I know that doesn't make it right, but.
No, but the idea, right, the idea of our discussion about this and the creation of this, as I understood it, was that we, like you said, we wanted, it's a new world. We're trying to come up with an orderly orderly guidebook to go forward. If folks have concerns that there are issues, it's better that we talk about them and discuss them now because, as we know, if there's a concern or litigation moving forward, all of those things cost the borough. And I know everybody on council wants to spend our limited budget on things that can certainly help our citizenry. So if anybody has any concerns or feels that there's an issue that's being overlooked that could result in litigation in the future, it would be now would be the time for us all to try to flesh this out so that we can get to the best orderly result so that at the end of the day, we don't waste our resources and time on litigation just for failure to to discuss things or walk things through. So that's the, you know, it's important that we do that at this time. And Andy, you Andy, you said that there's really not, unfortunately, there's not a tremendous amount of guidance out there because this is a fairly new topic to a degree.
I don't know if it's a it's a new topic, but I can tell you that there's zero guidance. It could mean that this really hasn't been an issue, at least an issue where it would hit a courtroom.
Right.
Yeah, so then it would make it a reported case.
Sure.
Maybe it's been an issue, but it hasn't been an issue that's been reported.
And we certainly want to.
It hasn't been an issue in any of the municipalities that I've been involved in. Thankfully, I haven't been involved yet in any matters that would require the removal of somebody for for being that disruptive that I can remember. I think I remember that.
Right, and it would seem to me that if someone indicated that they were recording and were polite about it, I think we don't want recording equipment being put into people's faces or, you know, causing people not to be able to react to each other because it's in the middle of everything. That that's the way that I would think of it. I I don't know if anybody else on council has any views on this, but it seems to me that the idea is to make it available, to make the situation usable and to avoid concerns. Anybody have anything else that they're concerned about, Colin, or I'm only asking you because you asked Andy a question? Is there anything else you can think of, maybe that you've incurred, you know, been involved with at work or or read about that you've got concerns about?
The only, the only opinion I have, and I'm not giving a legal opinion, but when more statutes are created or the more resolutions that are created, the more likelihood that litigation goes up. So I I don't see how the status quo will encourage litigation. I think just adding more rules on it will encourage litigation. Certainly, if anybody's disruptive at a meeting, criminal statutes would apply disrupting a public meeting is a criminal statute. Disorderly conduct is a criminal statute that's already in place, that's been in place for decades, that has a lot of case law. So I don't see why we need to add additional resolutions that haven't been that haven't been tested through the courts when criminal penalties would be available. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, that that's a great point. Yeah, because those are in place whether we have a resolution about this or not. But I would think that, you know, if there would be criminal charges, then, you know, the fact that we do have a resolution in place and presumably everybody's all know this of that. And if, you know, the president of council does try to curb the disturbance, and that would be even better for the, you know, for your office to establish that, yes, this was disorderly conduct. It would only help.
Has everyone had the opportunity to go over the resolution as it was presented? Any concerns from anybody else? If anybody feels comfortable, do they want to move forward to adopt the resolution presented? Or do we feel that it should go back to committee for further review? Which we can do.
This is John, I'm gonna make that motion that we put the.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Rothenberger. Do I have a second, please?
Mark Watkins, I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Watkins. Do I have any further discussion? Okay, then we're gonna go forward with the roll call, please. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Agreed, yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Neils.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yes.
Colin Boyer.
No.
John Rothenberger.
Yes.
Okay, looks like we've got a quorum so that and we've got that motion carry then. Okay, moving on, Andy. We've got Act ninety, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, Act ninety three, the Fire Insurance escrow act ordinance that we discussed last month and we were given authorization to advertise for tonight has been advertised with consideration for tonight. And again, that's the cleaning up here, but this act was passed in Pennsylvania some time ago and for whatever reason, the borough never adopted formally as an ordinance to the borough. So this would allow the borough to have some of the insurance proceeds after a fire damaged property receives insurance proceeds, have that escrow with the borough to ensure that the work is done properly and then to make sure that any and all municipal lien claims or any taxes related to the borough or any expenses for the borough would be taken care of and before the property were to be finalized and rebuilt.
Okay. Do I have a motion to to go forward with the Fire Insurance Escrow Act that's been advertised?
I'll make the motion.
I'm sorry, is that Ralph or I don't know who that was, I'm sorry.
It is, sorry.
That's okay. Do I have a second, please?
I'm a second.
Was that a second from Mr. Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, do I, okay, then, do we have any further discussion? All right, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Neils.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yes.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
John Rothenberger.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries then. Next thing we've got on our agenda, Andy, is the PennDOT resolution.
Okay, Chris, is this the PennDOT five-year agreement related to the plowing?
I believe that winter traffic services, yes, correct.
Okay, so thi- this agreement's for for other municipalities as well. It comes up every five years and PennDOT is proposing again another five-year contract which allows for PennDOT to make a payment each year to the borough for plowing of certain roads, looks like six point three total miles on Main Street, Richmond, Franklin, six sixty-two and and Main Street. The cost to do that is, there's an escalator, but the total over the five years is twenty-six thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. For this, for this year and next year, they have like a winter season, I'm looking for October fifteenth to April thirtieth. So for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it's forty-nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, and then there's an escalator. And then the fifth year goes up to fifty-six hundred fourteen dollars. So they're just asking you then for this agreement to sign.
We have always taken care of those and I would recommend we continue to take care of those. It's only, I think the total is what, around twenty-six thousand over the five years, if I remember correct? But I mean, I would, I would recommend the council go ahead and approve that.
Do we have a motion to adopt the PennDOT resolution?
This is Jim, I'm gonna make a motion.
Was that Mr. Neils?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Oh, thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you'll do the honors, please.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
Yes.
Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Jim Neils.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yes.
Colin Boyer.
Yes.
John Rothenberger.
Yes.
That motion carries then. Thank you, everybody. Andy, do you have anything additional that's not on the list that you need to discuss?
As good I can think of.
All right, we thank you very much. We're gonna move on to Water and Sewer Committee. The authority role, Pete, can you fill us in on that?
Yes. We've been talking about this for well over a year. The authority is a very valuable entity we need to keep it in place. And my goal was to get an outline approved before we wrote up a formal agreement between the borough and the authority as to what the authority is gonna do and what the borough is gonna do in the future, because the, it's gonna change a little bit from the way it used to be. So I emailed out an outline, actually twice. A couple of days ago, I emailed it again. Outlines the authority's role down the road and the borough's role role down the road. And where it came from, it came from the Sewer Water Committee. That's Pete, John, Suzanne, and it also Craig was involved, Chris was involved, Andy was involved. So once we had that first outline ready, then we went to the authority. They reviewed it, critiqued it, we changed it to their liking. So the it's now at the borough's doorstep and we need to have the borough approve this outline. And then once that's done, as far as I'm concerned, Andy and the authority's solicitor can make a formal lease agreement that outlines what the borough's role and the authority's role is down the road. I hate to even say this, but do you want me to read this or has everybody read it?
I believe that, Chris, wasn't that forwarded out to everybody on council?
Yeah, correct, it was, everybody had it in their packet for today. And Pete's summary was spot on, the authority is invaluable. And this kind of re- redefines a little bit mainly the financials that the council and authority are negotiating. And if everybody's good with it at that point, then the agreement gets rewritten and the authority does assume more role and order, which they they should be doing anyway. And the borough takes more responsibility in the in the finance. And the the amount that the authority would be requested to do would be minimized on the finance side.
How long would this be for?
Part, pardon me?
How long would this agreement be for then? I'm uncertain now.
Andy, I don't know, I mean, the last one was written in nineteen sixty or something like that. I I don't, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look and see if there's any time limitation on on these agreements. I'm not sure that there is, but I would say at the least it would be, it would be a thirty-year agreement. Something in the back of my mind tells me you gotta be careful with going thirty years or more because of issues involving transfer tax, but we'll, we'll figure it out, but my, my intent would be to have this extended term as long as possible so we didn't have to relook at it. But people might have different opinions on that, maybe one of you visited in five years or or a shorter term. You could have automatic renewals as well, if everything's going right, then it just automatically renews on a yearly or longer basis.
Can it be amended?
Yeah, there'd certainly be a provision in there that would say that disagreement can be amended. But normally what it says that it can be amended, but only in writing and, you know, obviously both parties would have to sign off on the amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Regardless of term.
Yeah, Andy, it might be, just as a thought, it might be a good idea. Yeah, Andy, it might be, just as a thought, it might be a good idea, even though it's, we don't want to revisit things unnecessarily, but it might be a good idea to have it, say, last for argument's sake, you know, ten years or five years with renewals every five years automatically unless, you know, a request is made for some other action.
Right.
And then each council, because councils change over approximately every five years between the two sets of terms of half and half, that would give every, it would give the opportunity for review during whatever council is present. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, that's a good idea. But it, this isn't going to be a thirty-year agreement, but, but, you know, we, we can have every five or ten years, but it, it certainly should be able to be amended because, you know, the world changes.
Well, yeah, of course, of course. And that'll be, I'm sure that we can fit in those provisions for that. So Andy, what are the steps that we should be taking at this point? Do we do something formalized at this point? Or do you start drafting the document and then we review it from there?
Well, I think it'd be a good idea just to put on the record that council is entering it with the, the outline that Pete has put in place. And then you can give me direction to move and work with the authority solicitor to start documenting this formally. And then we'll have something for council's review and the authority's review.
So does someone want to make that motion to accept Pete's proposal and authorize Andy to move forward with the creation of the, the authority, the authority borough documents?
Is Pete making that motion?
If I can, I'll make it. You know, everybody says it's Pete, but, you know, this was a collaborative effort. There's many people involved in this. So I'll, I'll make the motion to approve this outline that the borough and the authority will, the third, borough and authority's roles in the future.
And John will second that.
Perfect. We've got a motion and we've got a second by Mr. Rothenberger. Do we have any further discussion at this time? Okay. Doreen, if you'll do the honors, please.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, then that motion passes as well. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Moving on, Pete, I think it's still the Pete Show. We're moving on to the Personnel Committee for the Retirement Replacement.
Oh, okay. All right. Here again, you probably know most of this information, but Tim Cuck is going to retire on March, in March of twenty twenty-one. He was originally going to stay for a year longer than that. However, he's got some health issues. And he's going to leave March, I forget the dates.
I think his last day would be the fourteenth.
March fifteenth or something like that.
Yeah.
Now, and I, I've said this before, in the past, we've always had a water guy or water person and a sewer person, somebody in charge of each entity. John Kesseling was ahead in charge of water. He resigned. So we really haven't had a water person for a while. We need a water person. So Kevin Dunn, who already works for us, he wants to be the lead water person. And that's fine. But we need to have someone to replace Tim. So Chris made a little outline. We'd like to advertise on September fifteenth, start interviewing mid-October, hire someone November ninth, council meeting, and have the person start in mid-November. That way he can work with Tim, he can work with Craig and, and he, I say, keep saying he, it could be a female, because we actually had some very good female interviews when we hired, before we hired Craig. So anyway, I guess that's, that's the story.
Pete, just a, a simple question. Since we've been going without a, a water person, I'm sure you've looked at combining water and sewer together as one supervisor of, of both areas. I mean, they, they seem to work hand in hand. Why is that not an option? Is there, is there that much of a demand in, in both positions that warrants?
But my, Craig can talk to this, but my opinion, my opinion is it's too much work for one person. There's so much paperwork these days with EPA and all these other entities that, and Craig, I know, can talk to this. Trying to do this part-time or not concentrating on one, one topic, it just, it doesn't work very well. So, you know, we've always had a water person and a sewer person. And really, we need to get back to that.
So, so Tammy, this is not going away from the Public Works Department that we currently have. Craig is the sole person supervising everything and everybody. This, this puts a, a lead person for each one, which is what, what we're targeting. We've always had that. So.
I just was questioning, could they be combined, one person combined reporting to Craig?
Tammy, I'll weigh in on that a little bit. They, that, that would be, that would be next to impossible to combine that as a one-person job, reporting to me, just because the workload itself would be more than one person could handle running both of those, both of those entities and running them correctly and safely for our people. And also the reporting end of things is, and the sampling end of things is, is way more than one person can handle alone. We, you know, before John Kesseling retired, or not retired, but had moved on, we had John in water, we had Tim in sewer, and we had Kevin in sewer and helping out on, you know, some other things, as well as myself. And, you know, we could get things done now. Not having John, Kevin and I have been running the water system solely without a lead person. And it, it's, it's hard on, on Tim down there. There's a lot of work that, you know, my goal is in the long term, we're to have two people instead of three people, have two people running both of those entities. So I'm looking for, to replace him as a lead supervisor for the wastewater treatment, do the sampling, keep us up to date. Because the last thing that we want to do is miss a sample or have a violation. That's going to cost us a lot more and make us, you know, not look good in the public eye as well, which, you know, we want to run the system safe. We want to have good water. We want to have, you know, facilities that work. So in order to stay on top of those things and do them correctly, I think, you know, these two guys helping each other, we can make that work.
So we're going to have two people, not three people. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for.
You're welcome.
Clarifying.
So if I could then, Pete has put forward a proposal for a timeline to move forward to locate a new candidate. Can we have a motion to agree with that proposal so that we can move forward with it?
Well, is that, you want me to do that again?
You could, Pete, or someone else could. Sounds to me like that might not be a bad, bad plan.
I'll make the motion to start the process to interview for a new wastewater person.
Excellent. I've got that motion. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second it. This is Ralph.
Perfect. Do we have any further discussion?
This is Denton. If, if, I know I don't have a vote, but if I could have a comment in here, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Denton, go ahead.
That, that sewer plant has about fifty-five years, sixty years of history, and it's always been operated, in my memory, by a Fleetwood resident or school district resident from its very beginning. Long tenures of Buddy Ronzone, Greg Ebling, and, and now Tim. As a sewer authority, soon after I got involved in that, I started asking about training plans and, and what we know about what we do and what, how we do it. I had asked to have a training plan or, or not a training plan, but a list of the tasks that are, that have to be performed at the sewer plant, because that was my authority position. And I thought that if we got a list of tasks from Tim, and he did give me some, that were on like a daily basis, and what has to be done on a weekly basis, or maybe bimonthly or monthly or semi-annual or annual reports that have to go in, it would be, it would be a good base, because I knew Tim had talked about retiring in twenty twenty-two. And we're now in a position where we're not going to have somebody that's been a borough resident all their life. We're going to have to go out as, as Pete's recommending, advertise for and, and get a person to, to be hired for the position. And, and I agree with what Craig said. It's more than what one person can do to manage the sampling, check all the, the pump stations, do the reports, and, and follow up with the EPA. But I would suggest at this point, you start making a list of the tasks.
Denton, we're already, excuse me, Denton, we've already got that in play. We're getting standard operating procedures are already being documented by, by the, the crew.
We will have, yeah, we hope that, we will have them finished by the time the new hire comes in.
Okay, well, have some, aren't we going to have some overlap between the, potentially the new hire and the retiring employee as well?
Yes, we will. And like I said, we hope to have those SOPs finished prior to hiring the new person. So we are currently working on those.
Every time I've asked at sewer authority meetings, I've been told that, no, we didn't, we didn't get to that yet. So that's why I interrupted your, your meeting here with the, the last thought, or last comments I had that we weren't working on it. And I fully believe it's necessary if we're going to carry on to the, to the perfection that we have down there now.
Absolutely. And that's, that's our whole plan, Denton. Don't worry. We actually, we were thinking about that the other day. So we've already putting it, putting it into play and Craig is working on the progress of that. So no worries.
Yeah, and like, and Denton, you know, Tim had given you some things. Tim started it. I'm, I'm helping now to push him a little bit to get it done and Kevin as well. So we're, we're going to get there and we agree with you.
Tim, Tim had started that for me about a year ago and has never been able to add to it. And.
Yeah, we have to, we have to push, help him along to get it done. But we're, we are doing that. We're going to get it done.
All right. That's all I, this is why I listen in and if I can offer something that's of value, I hope it is. All right. Thank you for, thank you for my time. I'm going to unmute now.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, Doreen, then I'm going to bring it to you. If you wouldn't mind, please go on through the roll call.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
That's it. That motion carries. Okay, Pete, thank you so much for taking care of those two issues. Moving on to public safety, it looks like Ralph Touch is up with the Fire EMS Run Cards Procedure, Public Safety Committee reviews, and manager to sign is the superintendent.
So just a quick statement, surely, just a quick statement and then we'll ask for a motion. The quick statement is there's been some issues along the way with run cards, which is what sets up priority for emergency and fire visits. The teams are all working it out so that obviously what you would presume, the first and closest group is the one attending. There's just some details to work out and they're working this out by agreement, fire company to fire company. So they're asking for somebody to be available to sign the documents as we go. And I'll make the motion that that be allowed to be done by Chris as the discussions continue, because he has the right eye, he has familiarity with the group, and obviously the interest in having the closest people available for the emergencies.
And I have no issue and except to add that the public safety team would be copied on all of that as well.
Do I have a second then?
I'll second that.
That was Mr. Rothenberger. Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries as well. All right, we're going to move along to the manager's report. Chris?
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Everybody got a copy of the year-to-date expenses for tonight's meeting? If anybody has any questions, please see me as always. That, that report is updated monthly for everyone. No big changes, no surprises. And matter of fact, it's looking actually pretty good. Anybody have any questions on that? Also, related to finance, all the department heads and committee chairs have received the budget worksheets for twenty twenty-one. I can't believe we're issuing these, these numbers. And I, I don't know how we got to twenty twenty-one already, but the way twenty-twenty's going, maybe we won't. But anyway, everybody got the budget worksheets. I need them back in about, well, no later than this Friday, so I can start to come up with a budget for council for October. The goal would be the council meeting in October would be where we get the first look at the budget. We may need a workshop, depending on where we're at, to, to further discussions, so we can look at getting a tentative budget in November for approval in December. So just an FYI that's out there. Insurance, Bridget Park, we tried insurance. We are not successful in getting any insurance towards that because it was damaged by items that were carried by water, and therefore it's not covered by insurance. The park team will be meeting in the next week or two to discuss options related to the budget. As you can imagine, it's not cheap to replace a bridge. Sewer flood claims, also, all, all residents who had submitted sewer flood claims have been denied by municipal.
Immunity?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's unfortunate, but not unexpected. And a resident from above the railroad tracks on, Craig, help me out, what street was that on? Were the fence damaged by?
It's off Moss Alley in Jackson there.
Yes, Jackson, Jackson, that's what I'm thinking of. There's, there's a resident that sits in the back that borders borough property. A tree came down during the storm, took out their fence. The borough paid for the tree, obviously, to get it removed. But now they're requesting the borough fund their fence repair. We sent it to our insurance. Our insurance, for the same reason, I won't try to say that word again, denied it. Their insurance also, well, they have a thousand dollar deductible on their insurance, so it's not being covered. They requested council to consider a payment of seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, I believe it is. So I threw it out there for discussion?
So in, just, you know, looking at the insurance world just generally, so what normally would happen is when someone would put in a claim, it would be determined, is there any coverage under the policy? Or is there any exclusions that might apply? For trees, for instance, besides the immunity issue? For trees, for instance, besides the immunity issues, even a regular, a traditional homeowner that has a tree that comes down, if the tree appears to be healthy and isn't, you know, dead, has leaves on it, whatever, and it should come down in a storm, there would not usually be coverage for that, because that would be, that would just be an act of God, and there wouldn't be any coverage for that, which is unfortunate, makes for bad neighbors, unfortunately. Oftentimes, personal homeowners' policies have goodwill portions of them, where there's sort of a slush fund of so many thousands of dollars that can be utilized to repair something that wouldn't ordinarily be covered. That's not the case, I believe, under our commercial policy. And then if we think about, if we were to agree to this, and I appreciate discussion on this, we would be, there could be considerable claims of multiple different kinds that we might have to consider then, for consistency's sake. So it's a concern, because at the end of the day, the monies that we have are municipal monies that belong to the entire borough, so concerns. Does anybody have any thoughts on it either way?
It could be, it could be a dangerous do it open, because the next claim could be seven thousand dollars as opposed to seven hundred dollars, and then you give somebody the argument that, well, you did it for them, and why not us?
That's exactly right, Andy, unfortunately.
Yeah, that was my thoughts right off the bat. We can't be paying for people's fences, or porches, or whatever, because a healthy tree happens to fall on it, I think it's a slippery slope, and I don't think it's one we want to go down.
And presumably, our insurance adjusters, I mean, we do have insurance coverage, the whatever organization we utilize, whatever insurance company, that adjuster is supposed to be doing a full investigation to confirm what coverage is available, what the liability picture is, and make a determination from there.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened, so.
I appreciate that we're a small borough, and this is difficult to do to our neighbors and things. I understand that. I just don't think that there's a good way to remedy it, unfortunately.
Okay, I will advise them that unfortunately, we cannot help. Okay? Tannery Lot update. Real quick update, the grant is complete. We were fully authorized for the grant. We didn't receive the money yet. The grants coming in are very, very slow. We have not been told that they are not funded. It's just they've been inundated, and with everybody working from home, the Creek Grant, for example, we sent a request back in April and just got a response at the end of August. So just a little bit of delay, but at least it's been complete and approved. We should be getting that money. And temporarily, the Tannery Lot Committee requested that we get signs up in the lot that restrict trailer parking and overnight, or commercial parking overnight. There were some residents that may have been taking advantage of unlimited parking, so those signs should be going up in the next week or so. Going on, the Locust Street update, Department's homes. Chris, can you move your agenda? Oh, sorry, yep. Thanks. Thank you. So the Locust Street update is, of course, we had the four homes that burned. That church that we were just talking about earlier in the meeting is right next to those four homes. And the, right next to the church where the fire origin started in those two homes, which is 111 and 113, the individual who owned 111 also now purchased the lot next to his of the two homes that burned down, and will be constructing a single home on the two lots. So we have to go and basically approve a reverse subdivision, which is, according to talking to Ryan, Harry, and Andy, is strictly a council saying, no, hello, somebody's having some feedback, that there's no issue with such a process. Then anything he builds, of course, will have to be by code, and he's liable to have the variance, because our zoning is kind of restrictive when it comes to some of that stuff, and he's totally willing to do that. So is there any objections to having a reverse subdivision?
Hey, Chris, this is Craig. I have a question. Would he be, with that reverse subdivision, would that be including abandoning one water service and one sewer tap in, because they would only need one for that one property?
So the church is adding three, and we're nixing one there, so it's going to be-
Yeah, we should make sure that that gets properly abandoned as part of that process.
I believe the demolition permit required that, but you're right, that we should follow through to make sure. And I assume that this is going to be a single house and not a house with an apartment in it? So if you're looking at the church, the house to the right is 111. That's the homeowner of 111. 111 purchased 113. That make sense? He was an owner occupied, and is now living next to the UCC church, actually, in temporary But he was not a landlord, if that's what you're asking. Okay. Chris, this is, it's the building, the structure right next to the church that was a duplex. He's now going to tear that down and make a single home. Exactly. Okay.
Yeah, the properties are separately deeded, so it would be, it would have to be resurveyed, or there'd be a combination of the two lots into one, similar to Grand Central. Just now, there's a new structure that's being built.
Andy, is there anything we have to do at this time?
No, I don't think we've seen anything formally. Chris, have we? I think this is just a FYI for now.
Well, his attorney, I believe, was going to call you just to discuss it, because from all our understanding, the actual deed merger is just on the books. It doesn't require any type of reverse subdivision for Fleetwood.
Right. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's anything for us to, certainly not tonight, and probably not to go forward either, but yeah, I haven't heard from her. That's kind of frank.
So I would agree that the next step is they will submit the plan of the house on those merged properties. Okay, so, and then quickly, the other that I have there, was there any other questions? Sorry, just rushing her.
I just wanted to understand, so Mike Fitzgerald bought the church on Locust Street. The people who are living next to, in the mission home, own the property next to the church and still own it, and then the other two properties was purchased by a contractor and then sold to somebody else. Is that correct? Do I have these streets?
But there's four houses there. So the person living in the temporary home next to the UCC bought the adjoining property.
Okay. So they bought two properties, and the remaining-
The other two are 115 and 117. They were purchased by a company in Allentown, and then they flipped that to another person who is keeping me busy, actually. I was, I would have preferred keeping the first company, but we're keeping on it, making sure it doesn't stay dilapidated and that there's movement.
Thank you. It's just getting confused who owned what.
Yeah, no, it is. It's very confusing, and I'm dealing with it on a daily basis, so I might be running a little bit too fast on the explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other, the other, I talked, hello?
We're still here, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you were asking me a question. The, I've been talking to St. Joe's or Penn State Hershey on getting us flu shots. I was hoping to have some information by tonight, but they are planning on having a flu clinic, flu shot clinic down at the Willow Creek Elementary. I'm hoping that it's going to be free for residents. At least I'm going for free for borough employees. Some more information on that. I was, like I said, I was hoping to have it finalized, and the website was updated last week. Everybody is encouraged to go on it. The content pretty much, you know, stays the same, but the design around the content and how she merged some of the pages, you can tell she's a website designer, and I think she did a nice job on it. That's all I got.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the previous website maintenance person, who hopefully will have an easier job of it.
I'm sorry, you were broken up there, John. What?
I said, I want to thank the previous website maintainer, because hopefully they will have an easier job now.
Well, I'm looking at it right-
Well, thank you, and unfortunately, that's-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, I am still the keeper of the information, so I will, now I'm struggling to figure out the new way of doing it, but I like a challenge. So, but thank you, John, I appreciate that.
It does look really nice, Chris.
She did a nice job. I was very, she worked with us. I sent it to the office staff, they took a look at it. You know, we tweaked it a little bit, and we can continue doing it. Our contract is filled with her, so at this point, we would pay her hourly for additional design changes.
Now, it looks very nice, very professional. Good job. Okay, moving on then, if nobody has anything else, then we're moving on to the public works report from Kirk Conrad.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I want to let you guys know, Locust Street 12-inch water main replacement is in progress. Actually, the new piping is in today, all the way to the end block. We're going to load that pipe tomorrow, the new pipe, going to fill that up, let that sit for 24 hours, take some samples, and once we get a clean, two clean samples on that, we're going to hook up the houses to the new pipe, and then take the old one out and hook up, hook up at the other end. So that's progressing pretty well on Locust Street. The sidewalk replacement on Franklin Street at the Tannery Lot there, that is taking place. I got a pour of the first section tomorrow, actually, and that will clean that area up real nicely. We're working on cleaning cat spaces in Zone One. As you know, I had broke the whole borough down into five zones, and we've been working those zones through different departments, and that seems to be working out well for us. We're going to do the same thing with the storm system right now, and we started on Zone One, which involves about 60 cat spaces, and we're about almost three-quarters of the way through cleaning those out, so. And we told you about Tim's retirement down at the treatment plant. Have bad news tonight, we had applied for an H2O grant for the Penn Vest projects. We were hoping to get some money back through that process, and we had found out, just, I was away last week, we found out the week prior, that we have actually not received, we will not be receiving anything through the H2O grant. So good effort by all of us. We felt good about it, but I guess in this time, it's hard to get money, so we were denied that.
This was a political football thing, correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, other than that, I have no, nothing else going on. I was out last week, so I'm playing catch-up today and tomorrow, but if anybody has any questions or concerns, you know, please, you know how to get ahold of me.
Craig, you're on the subject of Franklin and Locust Street. The railroad crossing on Franklin Street?
Yes.
Is, did I hear that that's being repaired in the next week?
Well, it was supposed to be done this week. We talked to the railroad, they don't even know when it's going to be done. The company that's doing it is not even in the area yet, so everything is getting pushed back. So I will let you know when that, when we get another date, but it was supposed to start this week, the 15th to the 21st, and that has been pushed back.
Yeah, just a general comment, the one on Richmond Street is not getting any better. In the short amount of time that it's been there, it's starting to show some bumps.
The railroad, yeah.
Yeah, railroad crossing is certainly nowhere near what Franklin Street is, but the Richmond Street crossing is, is starting, you can feel it a whole lot more than you used to.
I mean, I can share that information with Norfolk. They're their own entity, and they're, they're pretty tough.
I know.
Anybody else have anything for Craig?
Yeah, I've got a question. I go out Vine Street quite often, and past the, near the pump station out there, there's this red pump, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is that going to be a permanent thing? And if so, should we put a cover or something over it, like a lean-to, so it is out of the elements?
That is not going to be permanent, Mark. We had that there through all the storms, and since the improvements of Vine Street are coming within the next, within the next two or three weeks, that should start, that pump will be removed. I just left it there as a backup, because those pumps in wet weather, you know, we're changing them, because we have some issues there. So I left it there just in case, you know, we have a heavy rain, the floats are in there, it will kick on automatically and get us out of any jams, rather than putting it away, and then having to get it out when we start having issues. We just decided to leave it there, because we're so close to construction of that new Vine Street pump station.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Tammy, I don't know if you picked up on the fact that the sidewalk that you were worried about on Franklin Street next to the new parking lot is being replaced as we speak.
Oh, great, 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 great. Thanks, Pete.
That should be finished by the end of this week.
Super.
Wonderful, that's great news. Okay, anybody else have anything for Craig?
Welcome back, Greg.
Yes, welcome back.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, then we're going to move forward with a request to approve the bills.
I'm going to make a motion to pay the bills that were ratified in August 24th.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'm going to make a motion to ratify those.
I'll second it. This is Ralph.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors, please.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jimmy, you around?
Jim, looks like he may have dropped.
Okay, Doreen, let's go on.
Okay, Mark, well, yeah, sorry, Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
No.
John Rothenberger?
Okay, I think that motion carries. McCardy vote? Anything else, John?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for this month.
Okay. And do we have a second for that?
I'll second that one as well.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second by Mr. Touch. Do we have any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, doing the honors?
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Did Jim Meals come back online?
I do not see him, though.
Okay. Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries as well. Next, we'll need a motion to approve the August 2020 minutes.
Mark Watkins, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Ralph beat you, Pete. So Ralph made the second. Do I have any further discussion? All those, no, all those, that's an old habit. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Sure. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Still not on.
Still on, okay. Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
I'm going to upstairs.
I'm going to abstain because I didn't get a chance to review them. I apologize for that.
Not a problem, go ahead, Doreen.
John Rockenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries as well. All right. Just with the folks in the team that are on the phone right now, does anybody have any questions or concerns, any issues they want to raise? Anything that wasn't covered by the agenda that you want to talk about?
I have just a couple of quick things. First of all, Trina's Trinkets had their grand opening on Saturday and I forgot to go. So when I remembered later in the day, I told Chris, I went later in the day and I felt so guilty, I spent a whole lot of money on things. The place looks great and there's a beautiful little, small banquet room upstairs. It seats about 60 or so. And I just love it because they're using the shop as their caterer. So, you know, just the community coming together. The two partners that were in the law firm with Joe O'Keefe have their offices in there. There's a spa in there and the shop is really adorable and really was not a hardship to spend that much money. So I wanted to just comment to make sure that you visit Trina's Trinkets at their new location because it really is spectacular. They've done a great job. I also, you know, we always have to name Halloween and it's always two days because, you know, several years ago, we tried to go down to one day and there was just about a mutiny on our hands. But this year with COVID, I thought it was worth getting everybody's comments that we continue with having our regular two-night trick-or-treating.
Might be a smarter idea, Tammy, because then there'd be less people out on the same day. And I guess the idea is we're trying to social distance and encourage that, so maybe that makes it a little easier?
Well, and I was thinking, you know, should we cancel Halloween trick-or-treating period? And I just feel like it's outdoors, it's, if people don't feel comfortable opening their door to the kids, then, you know, turn your porch light off.
They could just put candy out on the front porch if they like as well.
Exactly, exactly. So, and the kids will have masks on, so, you know, I think we should go ahead with Halloween. I agree with you, it should probably be the two nights, but I just wanted to make sure people were of the same thinking.
Maybe, Tammy, it would be a good idea to create something and put it up on the website with a recommendation of how, maybe some ideas so that we don't, people don't think that we're encouraging them to open their doors to people. Do you know what I mean? Maybe we can come up with a plan of how to enjoy Halloween safely.
Yeah, I wonder if there's anything out there on that yet. Good idea, Suzanne. I'll see what I can come up with.
And Rec Board is having a meeting next week. Maybe we can consider a trunk-or-treat like we had before where somehow we could meter the kids as they go from car to car. Perhaps there's a way, you know, there could be just a, the trunk-or-treat people can have a contest for their decorations for their trunk and the kids can just come by and pick something out of a basket, for instance, as opposed to face-to-face, you know, people handing off candy. Maybe we can do something like that, maybe not our full Halloween adventure that we normally have in the park, but maybe a pumpkin pickup and maybe a, maybe a trunk-or-treat or something because it seems to be.
Then we'll go from there and I'll see what I can come up with.
Sure, sounds like a plan.
Do we, do we have dates for trick-or-treat?
Well, it's always the 30th and 31st and, you know, God forbid we ever, you know, go away from that because then I get nasty phone calls.
And this year, that is Friday and Saturday nights and I understand on the 31st, we will actually have a full moon as well, so.
Who is that?
There you have it.
Um, I also wanted to just quickly mention, and this isn't really public information, but I happened to talk to Mike Fella and you all know that Mike Fella was on council for one month. And he's having some very serious surgery tomorrow, so just to keep him in your thoughts that he does well with the surgery. And that's all, all I had.
Please share, if you talk to the fellas, Tammy, please send them our best, our best prayers for him.
I have to tell you, every time I see him, he compliments all the work that everybody does. He goes, I know probably, not everybody notices, but he said, I know what it takes and I know how hard everybody's working. So he's always incredibly supportive and really very gracious about recognizing all the work that everybody does on behalf of the borough. So he's definitely a big fan of ours. So, yeah, keep him in your thoughts.
Along the same lines, I had a conversation with Suzanne Weatherhold, who many of you may know was on council as well. And she had not been in the borough for a bit because her kids are older and they're going to different schools now. And she was amazed at how between the Tannery parking lot, the upgrades out at the park, the memorial flags, just so many things in the borough, the paving, you know, work on Main Street, just so many changes and so many lovely things. She was just very, very complimentary and like Mike Fella, she recognizes the time that it takes to get everything accomplished and was really just wanted me to share with council how proud she was of everybody and how amazing she thought the results were. And she knows that there's more to come, but she was just very complimentary. So there you go.
Nice to hear, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? So, all right, can I have that motion to adjourn then for the evening? Anybody? Is that cricket?
Make that motion.
Who said they would make a motion? It's Tammy. Okay, Mr. Touch, you there? You should make a motion.
I'll make the motion, thank you.
You're welcome. And I need a second, Mr. Merkel, I think you want to do that, don't you?
Sure, second.
There we go. I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Doreen, I'm going to let you roll us out for the end here.
All righty. Suzanne Touch?
Agreed, let's go.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals? Because he's still dropped off. Mark Watkins?
Yeah.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
John Rockenberger?
I guess it would be a foretaste to withdraw my motion, so I'll say yes.
Okay, that carries then.